Do you want me to call the roll?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Tell?
Present.
Commissioner Sukla?
Here.
Administrator Bruner?
Here.
Attorney Baxter?
Here.
And Kim Purcell, Montezuma County Clerk and Recorder. The Montezuma County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing for review and determination of recommendations of a high-impact permit request for an agricultural, educational facility and farm submitted by the Montezuma Land Conservancy on property located at 19760 Road W., Lewis, Colorado, situated in Section 2, Township 37 North, Range 17 West, and MPM. The hearing will be held Monday, June 25, 2018, at 1:45 p.m. Commissioners' hearing room, 109 West Main, Cortez, Colorado. Interested persons may attend and give input. Information may be obtained from the Planning Department, Room 305, County Administrative Building, Cortez, Colorado, or accessed online at httpmontezumacounty.org Web Department's Planning. You may also contact the Planning Department at (970565) 2801 with questions. This file can be inspected in the Planning Department during regular office hours dated this 14th day of June, 2018. Kim Purcell, Clerk, Board of County Commissioners, Montezuma County, Colorado, published in the Cortez Journal on Friday, June 15, 2018.
Thank you, Kim. Okay.
This was originally brought to the Commissioners for preliminary review on May 7, wherein Mr. Loschert and Mr. Custer outlined their educational facility for the Montezuma Land Conservancy agricultural education facility. We went over just preliminary plans at that time. We have gotten some more detailed plans since then. It went to the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 24. It was received very well. There was unanimous approval for continuing with the high-impact permit process. At this point, they have -- they're not really sure how much their operation could potentially grow or how many people are going to utilize the facility. So we started at a fair traffic count. I think that there's been some people that have come into the -- well, there has been some people that have come into my office recently that are concerned with how this facility is going to impact County Road W. and their road, depending on how often people come. Now, I think as we said originally, a lot of it has to do with school facilities, which is a school bus, so there's not going to be a lot of -- from this application that we have, there's not going to be a lot of individual traffic that's associated with this. A lot of these are school projects. We also do have letters of support from the Southwest Conservation Corps, Southwest Colorado Research Center, the schools that are involved in utilizing this facility. It will be available, from what I understand, to the public to be rented possibly for whatever kind of agricultural-related education that can be available out there. Again, I've recently had some people that I know that have come into my office that are concerned about this, some of which are in the audience right now. This didn't come up during our initial meeting or at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so I guess before I address further, I might ask you, Chairman, if we could hear from them.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
How many square feet is it?
Total heated square feet is about 1,700, so the footprint is 24 by 44, so pretty modest size. The ground floor is all classroom space, basically one big open room with two bathrooms, small storage area. Then the upstairs are a story and a half kind of design, as small living quarters for farm manager.
Okay, that's all I had, and we have to go.
Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. If you would, if you want to make a comment, come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and tell us what you have to say.
Thank you, Commissioners, for giving the opportunity to speak on this. My name is Alan Mays, out at Lewis, 21693, County Road 21. So I'm not a neighbor of the neighborhood right here, but I am a neighbor out in the Lewis community, and I have several concerns about this new development. This development is on a conservation easement that states clearly that it was put into a conservation easement to protect the area from development. And so I think that this is something that is clearly being, you know, misrepresented, I guess. The scenic enjoyment of the general public, supported by several clearly delineated government policies, and yield a very high public benefit by having that open space. And that's stated in the deed of trust for the property or the easement itself. So the conservation easement, Montezuma Land Conservancy deed of trust. So the first thing that I want to say about this property is that I don't know, my own gut feeling, why the land conservancy should even own land. There's a question in my mind of what are they going to be as a taxpayer into the future? Are they going to be tax-exempt? These are things that I have concern about. And so my first request to the Commissioners, as they hear comments, is that because the public hasn't been so involved, especially the neighbors around this property, that they hear the comments, take those into consideration, and maybe put this on hold for a little bit. Because I think there are still other neighbors out there that aren't here today that do have some of the same concerns that I do. This land was put into a land conservancy easement in 2006 by the family who gifted this property to the Conservation District. That in itself is something that I don't know how that fits with the rules of easement entities. The property development, of course, the way they're being able to do this is through taxpayer funds. A GOCO grant was received, $1,500,000, and in that they stated that they wanted to do some education things. There's nothing with giving youth an opportunity to be educated in different things. I think there are very many of these entities already out there that can provide what they're saying they're going to do. So again, that's just one more thing that I really don't think that this facility is necessary. As far as places to have these venues, we have a Lewis-Ariola Community Center. It's got a big meeting room. Those places can be utilized by everybody to have those kinds of education meetings. So the development itself, I haven't seen what that structure is going to look like, but it is going to be a -- something that's going to impact the view in that neighborhood for local people. Again, outdoor education, that's what this is for, bringing kids in, get out there and get their hands dirty. So again, the facility, bathrooms are about the only thing that I can see that they might need to have for a group of kids out there. Safety of the kids, the transportation, school buses going out there. Access to that property is a concern. I think the Sheriff Allen should have some more input as to what is this going to do to his resources. County Road W.'s access off of 491 isn't an easy access. Getting back off of W. on 491 is even harder. And yes, they have County Road B. that they can drop down to or getting onto there, but you have to stop in the middle of the road in both places with lots of traffic on 491 to access to this property. County Road W. has been improved. The borrowed ditches, the road itself was raised, the borrowed ditches are deep and they're a concern. I live on County Road 21. They improved those borrowed ditches to carry, you know, rainwater, things like that. But you don't know where the edge of that road is in the wintertime. When we have snow on the ground, you don't know where that edge of that road is. And so with more traffic on there, I think it is going to be a hazard. And that's, again, my concern with schoolchildren, youth going out there. The canal itself is a safety hazard. I don't know if the land conservancy is ready for the liability that is possible on that property. Kids jumping in that canal, getting hurt on the road, those are all concerns of young people out on that. The people that are going to be providing the education, they aren't part of the school. I don't know how they're vetted. I don't know who these people are going to be. We don't know what kind of education they're even going to be given. The schools, all of the schools here in the local area, except with maybe the Dove Creek School, I don't know if they have one of those greenhouses, those seasonal high tunnels, but all of the kids have access to some of the things that these educators are going to be providing to have kids know where their food comes from. They're growing foods at all of the schools, so they know how food is being developed. I'm not sure what more getting kids out there on a regular basis is going to do to change what we already are doing. Again, lots of agencies are providing outdoor education, so that's why I'm not sure that this is necessary. The -- again, I mentioned the Lewis-Ariola Community Center. I think that that is a great place for things, if they want to get them out into the rural area, to see some things that are going on. The land was gifted, and so it doesn't give a perspective to these kids how land is acquired and held by families. Our families are farmers and ranchers. It's not a clear picture of what farm and ranch people actually have to go through to be a working farm and be a productive place. If they want to see that kind of stuff with the technologies we have today, they can bring it on a screen. They could be in the tractor seat farming if they wanted to with the technologies that we have today, cameras on the field, seeing what can be done. I don't think we need to put our kids in danger of going back and forth on the roads. They have school trips that are pretty important to them, but I don't know that this is one that they have to be brought into. The partnerships that the land conservancy has, they are very strongly connected with the High Desert Conservation District, who are, I understand, going to be going after Mill Levy, and they want to have a venue place to have youth education or other education for the public. Again, those kinds of places are already here in the county that they can utilize. So I don't know that more property tax monies should be going to that district as well as then transferred from them to the Montezuma Land Conservancy. So those are my thoughts. I wish, you know, you could hear from more of the neighbors, and then if nothing else, put this maybe in a holding pattern until such time that we can have. The boxes, I'm sorry, I'm rambling. One more time, the boxes that the Planning Department go through when they review a impact, high-impact request can be vague, and some of the responses that the land conservancy has put in there are in progress. So they don't have some of the things already there that they can say, "We've got that. Here it is, part of the document." So I think that there's still some things missing that maybe should be all put together in a package, clear, complete, that then the public can be aware that, yes, this is something that maybe could be moving forward. Again, I don't think this facility is a necessary thing in Montezuma County. Thank you very much.
Can I respond quickly to the boxes?
Oh, I think they're good. They do -- I'm not saying that the Planning Department has gone through a process to develop that process. I think those things are there. I just think that when someone says that they haven't fully met it is where I was going with that.
Well, and what we have implemented, and the Commissioners have allowed the Planning Department to implement, is instead of issuing a full high-impact permit, once a public hearing like this is done, we have been issuing notices to proceed. So those things, even though they say that they're in process, we have to have them submitted before I -- we bring back the high-impact permit as a whole back to the Commissioners so that there is a complete -- so all the engineering certifications and all the things that are represented in their application have to be supplied prior to. It's really hard for us to require engineering certifications on something in the beginning when it can't even be built until they have a go-ahead to do it. So we're trying, I think we're doing a diligent job in trying to make a bridge from this process to the final permit.
I think Leanne and the Planning Department are doing their job and doing it well. I wasn't trying to say anything.
No, I know. I was just explaining what we tried to implement to make that a little bit more, a little bit better.
Right. Well, I would like to see something a little bit more of what the structure is going to be, because the only thing that I've seen is it can't be more than 35 feet high.
Looks like a barn.
Well, a tall barn in a neighborhood that doesn't need development.
It looks like a nice house.
Okay, I didn't say it looked like a barn. But I do think that it is something that's a little more than what's really necessary. I mean, they have a grand plan. I don't argue that at all. They, you know, and they have $1,500,000 to construct something, which are taxpayer dollars. I think those dollars could be very well spent for the land conservancy in overseeing the lands that they have in conservation easements. You go out and look at lands that are in those easements, I think they're put in and sometimes forgotten by MLC. There are things going on on some of those lands where erosion is occurring, overgrazing on some of these lands that shouldn't be, especially this year in drought conditions. So I'm not sure what Montezuma Land Conservancy overview of those lands really is, because what I've seen is there's some drastic impacts occurring on the land today. So I think those are the things they should better spend their dollars on. The land, what is it, 43,000 acres that they have? That's a lot of land to track, so I think that's where they should focus. Thank you.
I'm Melinda Hickson. Vance Hickson and I are the neighbors that are the most impacted by this. Their east fence line and our west match up. The plot plan that you have does not represent where our home is. The old home of Vance's grandmother is the one that's represented here down by the county road. Our new home is up --
Am I guessing right?
You are guessing. Come back down towards me a bit, just off the, just a little bit more towards me. Down, down, not that far, now halfway up. This will have a great impact on us. We built our home up there to get away from the county road, to get away from the impact of people, and because this was a conservancy. So we definitely have some concerns. Start with the simple. Prairie dogs. Anyone that is farming, those things are a blight on our life. We have spent a lot of money having professionals come in and deal with prairie dogs in our alfalfa fields. We have three to four acres that cannot be farmed because the prairie dogs are not being managed on the other side of the fence. It's a huge impact to us. The other problem I have is I actually recently retired, so I'm home more, and so I'm seeing more of the use that's taking place there now in the amount of people. I would like to know, because it's such a vague number we're being told, I want to know on a daily basis what's a maximum allowable people that are going to be there, how many venues per year will be there, how many venues per month, what is the maximum allowable people there, what is the maximum allowable vehicles? So, and I want to know who's going to monitor it, who's going to control it, and who's going to take care of it. The livestock on the premises, we've had a few cows in our alfalfa. Part of it, we blew it, left the gate open. The fence, we've requested twice to be fixed. It was damaged when an irrigation line was put in, still not fixed. In the original plan I saw, and we really liked the idea of there was supposed to be an orchard and gardens put in, there's no timelines, there's no saying when any of this will happen, it's just out there. How are you going to hold them accountable? Who's going to monitor it? The, they say they're putting trees up. I will tell you, when we read that, we knew for a fact we were why, because of the impact it's going to have on us. I need to know what size those trees are going to be. Are they going to be the ones you can get from the soil conservation that are about this big and about this tall, and I'll be dead before they're any good, and my grandson will be the only one that gets a value of them? There's a lot of questions that are very open-ended in what I saw that haven't been addressed. It needs to be very specific. It needs to be what you're going to do, and guidelines, and who's going to monitor, how we're going to follow up, and how we're going to make this happen. I also have a concern over the top floor being an apartment for a farm manager. If this is truly to be used to educate our children, and from what we've watched in the last year or so, I see the buses, I see the kids, I see them out there moving, you know, gated pipe, I don't see a need for residency there. There currently isn't, and they're managing it fine. The other problem that bothered me was the fact that there is, this is phase one. So what the heck is phase two? And this is supposed to be an agricultural conservancy, not some venue planning or any of that. So those are concerns. I would really like you to table this and get more input, make, get more deadlines, get more clear, and give the public more time to talk, and really look at it. For $1,500,000, I look at this county and we're a poor county. Is that a good use of our money? Is there other things and other benefits that we could help with? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My sister-in-law said it most what I want, but I live right on Road W. I'm seeing these trucks go by every day. I can't, you have to be careful of dogs that are out there. I have people that are taking four-wheelers that are going --
State your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Erin Hickson-Shack, and I am very concerned, like I said, about the road and how much access is going to be on that road. Like today, two trucks just went flying by. You know, they didn't care if rocks were fine, because that is a gravel road right now. And you really shouldn't be going that fast up that road, right at the hill, because it comes to the top of the hill. It goes, and then when it came out, he parked right here. If somebody come over the hill, they would have hit the back of that truck. And, you know, if that's what's going to be happening, people are going to be parking out there, there's going to be an accident and everything. And I feel that, like everybody is saying, my dad would die right now if he knew what was going on. And I think that's what bothers me the most. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment.
Am I too late?
Go ahead.
I don't know if there'll be other times to comment about this, so I'd like to make a few remarks on what I just heard. There is not $1.5 million invested in this of taxpayer money anywhere. That is a mistake, so I hope you will listen to Jay Roschert when he has a chance to talk, and he'll tell you the same thing.
How much is there invested? If 1.5 is, what is the number?
I don't know what you --
You said there wasn't.
Okay.
What's the number?
I don't know what MLC has invested so far, but I think that Mr. Mays was referring to some sort of transfer costs or something like that. I'm not 100% sure.
If I can clarify, MLC received a GOCO grant for $1,000,000, what, $1,000,200?
$1.8.
$1.8, even more than that. So this is money's, GOCO money's, we are taxpayer. They come in, come in to taxpayers, go to, or release. So that's what I was going to say.
And GOCO money isn't taxpayer money. You know, that's lottery, excuse me, lottery money.
And those people don't pay taxes?
Well, but when they bought their lottery tickets, it's that lottery ticket money that's going to the GOCO funds, not like property taxes. They do pay property taxes, they're done, but this is a separate purchase that they're making that goes to GOCO. I think you understand.
I do.
I think you understand GOCO.
MB, can you back up just a little bit, because it's too --
Yeah, you know, I don't know anything about microphones, so I'm sorry. Thank you.
Because when it comes to across on the other, when you're that close, they can't understand you.
Okay. I always think you should --
That's good.
All right. I always think you should stand near it, so you're going to be sure you like to be to be heard. It's interesting that people are showing up now and didn't come to the P and Z meeting because I think that they had notice. As far as other entities providing the same services that MLC plans to do with this property, Mr. Mays suggested that the Lewis-Ariola Community Center has a good venue and a large venue. They do have a large venue for a teaching purpose and a classroom, but there's so much more happening out on this land that MLC is planning to use that has very little to do with being inside in a classroom. So that's mixing apples and oranges. The same things can't happen. There's going to be a classroom as well as a lot of outdoor, on-the-ground work at the MLC site, and there's not on-the-ground work at the Lewis-Ariola site in the same structured way that's going to happen at the MLC site, so I think that was not an especially good comparison to make. As far as County Road 20, in my opinion, because it's been improved, it's more dangerous. Because you know, when you add improvements, you often raise the road, and that causes the surface, driving surface to narrow. You all are familiar with what, what happens like that. And that's happened on County Road 20 as well as BB and CC and my own Road 21. That's just what happens when you add gravel and shape it and so forth. It just eventually starts to get taller and taller, and the bar, bar ditches seem to get deeper and deeper. That happens all across our county. And on that road, it isn't the trucks coming in and out of that property that are speeding. It's other residents who live on that road that are speeding. So, if I had more time, I would do a better job of refuting a lot of the statements that were made. I just want you to be sure to, don't take everything at completely face value that you heard. Okay?
Let me ask you one thing. You said County Road 20. Isn't the access to this property off of W?
I just, my County Road 20 was improved and it got narrower. Well, because they added gravel. And when you add gravel, you add, you know, this goes up, the surface of the-
Well, lane width is supposed to stay the same. Now, you may have-
But, well, but it doesn't, Keenan, always.
When it was just a dirt road, you don't have any boundaries on that, MB. I mean, a dirt road can be as wide and broad.
I'm just saying that in my looking at County Road W now, where this is, after they have so-called improved it, improved it, it's got steeper fall-off in some places. That's all I'm saying. And I was likening that to other county roads. That, that was my comment. And I'm pretty sure that Jay will be able to talk about this a little bit better. But I, I feel as a citizen, you notice I took my, I took this off? Because I'm, I'm speaking as a citizen in favor of this project. This is something that will really enhance, oh, I'm probably standing too close again. Really will help kids in our community learn about farming outside. I think that's important. Thank you.
May I have a couple more minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
I too agree that these improvements on county roads have changed the, the face of those roads. But it has also improved the, the passage of these, and so traffic does seem to increase. And so I'm not arguing with Mrs. McAfee's assessment of, of that. But people do increase their speed, and with children on that, that's a safety factor that I'm a little bit more concerned with. Our, our county citizens do know where they, where they live and, and how they get down their county roads. But I think that it's, when, when you bring someone else in that isn't from there, it is a scary situation that they can get themselves into, and others as well. This venue is just another distraction for our failing schools here in this county. And I say failing because they've been in the papers saying that they are having problems with the education of our children. And I think that this is just one more thing that maybe our schools are, you know, those, those kids are going to be out of the classroom. They're not going to be where they need to be with what, what's going on in the local area. I have no problem with them learning about farming and ranching and getting some hands-on once in a while. But I don't think we need a full venue like this for a regular teaching experience. And again, I want to say, as Mrs. Hickson said, having a living quarters, the safety of kids is, is primary, in my mind. Having someone there that we don't have any knowledge of who that is, they're not vetted through the schools, we don't know who they are. Some of the kids, people that are going to be out there working on a daily basis, we don't know who they are, and we're putting our children out there. So again, I, I have my concerns about this and, and not it being a necessary item out there. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Any closing public comment? Would you like to-
I would, no. I'm sure Jay will say.
Yeah, I would love to. So I'm Jay Loeschert. I work for Monazuma Land Conservancy, I'm the Outreach and Education Coordinator, and kind of the person spearheading this project. I'm not sure of all the, the comments and objections to the project that I've heard, I'm not sure which ones are relative to the permit. But I'm happy to address them, and I, I really appreciate the neighbors bringing up most of the safety concerns and most of the development concerns that we've vetted ourselves, because those same issues have occurred to us, and we took, took them very seriously in our planning process. The first thing we did was adjust the driveway to make it safer and more in compliance with the county's requirements to come off a county road at 90 degrees. The previous driveway was kind of on an angle. It was also located directly next to the U-lateral, which is an open ditch right there. So that was a huge safety concern, and we recognized right away that to make access safer for school buses, especially for school buses, for all, for all the traffic on the farm, that we needed to relocate that driveway slightly and widen it. We worked with the county to put in the necessary culverts. We have been super appreciative of the county's work to improve Road W. They have widened it, as well as adding gravel. They've widened it extensively, improved the, the bar ditches as well. So, yeah, traffic is fast through there now. I, I admit it. I, I see it every day. I'm back and forth to the farm twice a day to move water. And I, I get, I got passed on the way here by somebody going at least 50 miles an hour, it seemed like, you know, with gravel spraying everywhere. And I don't know that that's something that we can mitigate, other than to ask our guests to, to drive carefully and slowly, which I believe most of them have. Most school bus drivers are overly cautious, if anything, and drive under the speed limit, in my experience. In terms of, you know, neighborhood traffic, yes, we will see an increase. I, I don't have exact figures about what traffic thresholds are going to be like, but I know that, that's sort of what triggered, triggered this high-impact permit application, was because we felt like there might be a couple events throughout the course of the year where we exceed that 15-vehicle trips per day threshold, and wanted to make sure that we were doing our due diligence and informing the county that this was a possibility. To my knowledge, so far this year, I don't know that we've come close to that at all. But again, we're just kind of playing it safe by making sure that if that were to happen, if we were to have more than 15-vehicle trips to the property a day, that we wanted to be in compliance and to, you know, do, do what we needed to do for the county. I, I will say that in terms of the conservation easement, obviously, this is a, this was a very, you know, particularly, you know, tough subject for us, because we had to look through the conservation easement language, which was signed in 2006 and executed, and it's a public document. And if you look at that, the conservation easement language real closely, as we have, we've gone over it with a fine-tooth comb to see if anything we were doing was out of compliance with the language or the intent of that conservation easement. And we've had lawyers look at it, independent counsel look at it, just to make sure that we were in compliance with the conservation easement. I will say this, the, like most conservation easements, the one on our property, has a home site that is, you know, not subject to any conservation requirements. So, you know, individuals, when landowners come to us to do a conservation easement, they say, well, I've, I said 500 acres, and I want to set aside five for, for a home site. And that's totally fine, and we worked that out, and it's part of the language, and it's all written into the conservation easement. Fozzie's Farm, this property on, on Road W, same thing. It has about a two, two and a half acre home site. And what we're doing here with this development, with this classroom building, is well within that home site area. And it's well within the, you know, the, the square footage requirements, it's well within the, the height requirements that are stipulated in the, in the conservation easement. So we've done, we've felt like a very thorough job of making sure that what we have planned is both in the, fits within the, the letter of the, the conservation easement, as well as in the spirit of the conservation easement. Yes, sir.
I've got one question, that, that I'm a little bit baffled. Most of the other conservation easements that I've seen, or that you've been involved in with putting somebody's property in the conservation easement, you didn't end up owning that land. They retained the ownership. You provided the tax incentives and the, the things that went with that conservation easement. This puts you in a little bit different position, where you own the land, and you're the land conservancy. And I'm not really certain how, I'm, I'm not really certain I'm comfortable or understanding now that you are the owner of the land, as well as the conservancy on it. And I, I guess I, I didn't know you guys could take possession and own property. I guess I, I don't know how you're structured that says you can own, own property.
Right. Yeah, it's not uncommon at all for land trusts across the country, nationwide, to own, be owned properties. It's not uncommon at all. In fact, it's more uncommon for them not to. Several land trusts here in Colorado own thousands of acres, which they manage. What we did in, in, in our case, because we knew the donation was coming, is we formed a separate legal entity called MLC Holdings LLC. And the deed to the property is, is to MLC Holdings LLC. So that's one way that land trusts do that.
So you're a taxable corporate, you're a limited liability company that's taxable, just like everybody else, and pay property?
It's still private property and still on the tax rolls. We voluntarily pay our taxes, pay our property taxes. So since we've taken over ownership, we've paid our taxes, even though we are a tax-exempt organization.
But your LLC probably is not, though.
I, I'm not the legal expert on that. I'd have to get back to you on that for more information. But we, just to be, just to be on the safe side and to be a good neighbor, we've continued to pay our property taxes, whether that's required by law or not, I'm not sure. But I know we've done that willingly and gladly. I will correct one piece of misinformation that was, that was espoused earlier. There are zero tax dollars involved in this project. Zero. We have received, of the 1.8 million dollar grant that we've, that our community has received from Great Outdoors Colorado, that's a three-year grant. That money is divvied up between 20 different organizations. And I think Amy Fair and I came and talked to you guys when we received that grant back in December, informed you about that. And all the partnerships that make up the coalition that received that grant are receiving 1.8 million dollars over three years. So I won't, the, the money comes to MLC. We are the fiscal agent. And then we distribute that money to all the different groups in the community that were part of that planning process and part of that coalition. Of that 1.8 million dollars, 58,725 is set aside for this project. So a very small amount of that overall grant that was given to our community is going for this project in particular. GOCO felt it was a valuable resource to have, an education facility where kids can, you know, not go to the Lewis Grange and then have to take a bus to a farm, or, you know, come to the Lewis-Ariola Community Center and then have to take another bus to a farm to get their hands dirty, literally. They felt it was important that there was an on-farm site where school groups and, you know, community organizations could come and see what farming and ranching is all about in our community.
Doesn't our CSU Extension Farm out of Yellow Jacket do, do a lot of that?
They do. They don't, I don't know if they have a classroom facility that they teach out of, or have-
I don't, I don't know if they're, but I mean about taking kids out and getting them hands-on and showing them. I mean, there's, there's definitely that, that aspect to them.
But anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. And in terms of the overall budget for the project, we received another private grant. No tax dollars involved there. And Great Outdoors, as MB explained, Great Outdoors Colorado is not taxpayer-funded. It's, it's all lottery money. So there's zero tax dollars involved. We did receive another grant for $100,000 from a private foundation who supports the work that we're doing. So the total budget for this project is $158,000. And it's going to be tight. And we're really struggling to figure out how to, how to get this finished. The upstairs apartment for the, the on-farm manager may or may not be finished out. We have to get everything framed and dried in and have the classroom operational, so we can use that immediately. That's our top priority. But we're going to be, you know, setting aside that part of the project for when more funds become available. So yeah, I really appreciate the safety concerns. The, the open canal there, the U-lateral runs right through our property, as you can see on the map, up there near the northeast corner. It is an open ditch for, I think, about 300 yards. And we do have plans in place, and the, the rancher that we partner with, who releases pasture and runs his dress fed beef operation on our place part of the year, he's, could be building a fence for us around that. And this has been quite a bit of a planning ordeal, but creating a, a fence that keeps kids and adults away from that open canal. So it's separate, it creates a physical barrier between where we do our programming, where we do the work on the farm with the groups, and that open canal. So alleviating that, mitigating that, that obvious, you know, potential for disaster. But I appreciate the neighbor's concern and bringing that to our attention. It's something we've been thinking about and working on for a long time, working with our insurance to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to prevent and mitigate any risk involved with that as well. And again, I'm not sure to what extent, you know, the, the concerns about the height of the building have to bear on the, the permit. Our building is much, much smaller, in fact, than the Hickson's home. You know, and we do plan to plant trees, and I'm, I'm so glad you brought that up, because, you know, that's part of our budget that we're really, you know, prioritizing, is making sure that we do have the funds available in the budget once the building is complete, to install some mature trees, so that they don't have, you know, 50 years' worth of growing to do before they're effective at all. But we, I think we've done a lot of thinking and planning and trying to be proactive about how we can be good neighbors. And yeah, we have prairie dogs. Yes, we have weeds. Our neighbors to the south of us have prairie dogs, and they have weeds that impact us. And we're, we're working on that, and I think since we've taken over management of the farm, we've, we've made strides. I, you know, I, I'm not completely familiar with what the previous lessee was doing with the property. But when we took it over, there, there were some serious challenges in terms of managing that property well. And we're trying to do our best to mitigate those impacts that we have and be good neighbors, and to manage our prairie dogs and to manage our weeds. Because it really does, it takes people working together to make all that happen well. I mean, obviously, we can't have prairie dogs and expect them to stop at the fence line. And I, I was surprised to hear that there is a damaged fence between us and the Hickson's place. I had no knowledge of that, and I haven't seen cows getting in and out of that. So I'd be happy to, to find out where that is and get right on that. Because I know the, the rancher who runs his cows on our place would want to know right about, about that right away, too. So, I, I'm not sure what else, again, needs to be addressed in terms of the need for a facility like this, or the appropriateness of the educational methods, or who we're vetting and who's going to be on the property, who's not going to be on the property. I would just ask the commissioners to, you know, to kind of hold us to the same standards as any private property owner. You know, if you have a party or a cookout or a get-together, is the county responsible for monitoring how many people are coming in and off the property? Who those people are, if there are children present? Are those people who are impacting or, or interacting with children, are they properly vetted? I mean, those are, those are big questions, I think, exceed the scope of what this impact permit is all about. But I will say that we're, we're very diligent. We're working through the county, or the state childcare licensing facility to become a licensed childcare facility, so that we can offer summer camps. Our goal next year is to have summer camps there at the property. Whether or not we jump through all those hoops in time to make that a reality, we're not sure. But we're doing the best we can to be good neighbors and responsible, and to be proactive about reducing risks and reducing our impact to the community. And I will say this, I'm, I'm out there every day. I have, you know, and this isn't a feather in my cap, but I have seen a remarkable turnaround in the quality of the, the production and the, the management of the, the challenges that we have, the weeds and the prairie dogs. Remarkable turnaround in just, after, you know, one full growing season and partway into this one. So we're doing our best. We're, you know, we're struggling, like every other farmer does around here, to make ends meet and to prioritize, you know, managing, managing our property well. And we're also adding that component, where we're getting kids involved in that process, too. And if, if anyone doubts the, the value of, of having, you know, a facility like this, or a series of programs like this, I'd invite them to come out anytime to the farm. Right now, I have 11 students, high school students from Southwest Open School, who three weeks ago didn't know which end of the shovel he worked. Now are passing tests right now in the field about how to move side roll sprinklers, how to manage water through gated pipe and irrigate a field effectively, how to troubleshoot when, you know, when the valve blows off, you know, or the drain valve blows out of a, of a gated pipe. I'm training them right now to be part of the solution to the shortage of labor, skilled workforce that we have in here in our county for, for ag producers. I mean, you talk to any farmer around, I think the real bottom- I mean, you talk to any farmer around, I think the real bottleneck in their, in most people's production model is just the lack of hands. You know, people who want to do this work, who know how to do this work, and right now, I've got 11 kids who are signed up and ready to help fill that gap. So I think there is value in the project. You know, we could argue all day about whether you need a classroom to do that or not, but when you're feeding kids and, you know, trucking groceries back and forth in a cooler and a dry box from City Market to the farm, it just takes time. And if you had a fridge there and a little mini kitchen in the classroom, boom, you're done with lunch in 10 minutes and not, you know, having, it just saves time. You know, it just makes life a whole lot easier if you have a place to eat where your paper plates and your napkins aren't blowing all over the place. So it's just the little things like that that make having a classroom facility so valuable. And we won't even get into the rotten weather that we sometimes deal with on the farm and these programs. It's just a chance for us to get out of the weather and out of these challenging conditions, to make that visitor experience more positive, to reflect or to have students and adults enjoy their farm experience so that they don't, you know, walk away from, "Oh, yeah, that was kind of cool, but I was freezing cold the whole time, there's nowhere to warm up and I had to use a Porta-Jon and couldn't wash my hands and because there was no running water." We're trying to mitigate all that so that we can provide a really positive experience for our guests and hoping that then they identify that positive experience with a positive attitude about farming and ranching in our community and how important it is and how challenging it is and how, how hard farmers and ranchers work to do what they do. So that's, that's the intent of the project and we hope that we're, we're doing so in a way that, you know, we're being good neighbors.
Do you have anything further to add?
I don't, not at this point. Can I have one more comment?
Questions? Comments? What?
I have one thing I'd like to ask. If I could, please.
In regards to the quality of the land on the other side of the fence from us, I have to say they have made a huge improvement over the thistle. It was absolutely horrendous and we have watched them individually dig them, spray them, they have worked tirelessly to fix that. So with all the negativity, there has been some true positive that we have seen come forth.
Thank you. Whose property, who gifted this to the land conservancy?
I think that they asked to remain anonymous.
Oh, okay. Interesting.
It's not a huge secret, though, if you asked around, you could find out pretty easily. But you won't hear it from me.
I'm not, I'm not that interested.
On the Conservation Easement and where you're locating it, does the Conservation Easement read where they can put the home site anywhere they want on this property?
No, in the Conservation Easement, there's a map that was drawn in and submitted with the Conservation as part of the legal documents, but I think it's one of the appendices to the Conservation Easement itself and it has a, has an outline of where that home site is. We realized right away that that was not a really very workable site for any kind of structure because since the Conservation Easement was written and that home site was delineated, the previous owners worked out a cost-share program with NRCS to install some underground water lines that feed the irrigation system on the south half of the property. They run, those irrigation lines run through the, along the eastern fence line, but they go through that little wedge at the top where it kind of goes out of a perfect rectangle, yeah, right up there. And that's where the original home site was, but because of all that infrastructure that's now existing, the buried pipelines and the meters and the drain boxes and everything else that's there, the vent stacks, it really wasn't a very ideal situation for either a home or a classroom. So we went through the process of amending the Conservation Easement, again, with the previous owner's blessing, with independent counsel advice about how to do that. We vetted that through our Board of Directors. We've done, I think, an excellent job of being very scrupulous about changing anything, just as we, as a land trust, would be very, you know, we'd have our magnifying glass out for any landowner who wanted to adjust their Conservation Easement in any shape or fashion.
And how often do you adjust a Conservation Easement in Monizuma County? How many do you think that you've adjusted or changed?
Boy, I couldn't speak to that, sir, I can try to find that out, but I don't think it's very common, but I don't think it's unprecedented either.
I, I mean, I was under the understanding that once you do the Conservation, it can't be modified, but apparently, I mean, we approve a lot of those and we're assured of that when they come in here to put one of these things in the Conservation Easement.
My understanding is that the acreage that was delineated in the original home site, that acreage has stayed the same. So we're very careful to make sure that we weren't taking, you know, what was originally two acres and turn it into 20 acres and say, "We can do whatever we want on this 20 acres now." We've maintained that same acreage, we've just shifted it slightly to make it more usable.
And then you said it was a board, I can't remember, you had some initials for, there was a board that was, the actual owners?
Oh, MLC Holdings.
MLC Holdings.
LLC, yeah.
Is that a group of people?
It's a, I think it's a, again, I'm not a lawyer and I wasn't there when this was all set up. I believe it's a, you know, an independent company. I think we're the sole proprietors of that LLC.
And is this company, are they local?
Well, it's, MLC owns, MLC Holdings LLC.
So you, it's the one and the same. You are the MLC and you're the Monizuma Land Conservancy, right?
Essentially. And again, I apologize, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a tax attorney. I don't know how this all works exactly, but MLC is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and for us to manage a property like this, we had to form a separate LLC, which is a...
I think you had to form it to own it, to be the owner, ownership of it. It's an asset holding company, it's a limited liability holding company so they can own the asset.
Yeah. I hope I answered your question. I can, I can get back to you with more information.
No, we're fine. I think Commissioner Till did. Do you have a board, a voting board that is, that you meet regularly?
Yeah, we have a Board of Directors, that means monthly.
How many's on that board?
I think we're at, at least nine, maybe, maybe 10 or 11.
And I assume they're all locals?
Yep, I believe so. I believe everyone's a local resident of at least Monizuma County and Delores, but I can't speak to that for 100% sure.
And again, what the planning department is requesting right now, since this is, if you decide to proceed with this, allow us to proceed with this project, would be the notice to proceed, allowing them to move their project ahead, allowing them time to submit the rest of their supplemental items, things of that nature, and then we'll come back once the project is completed for your final approval and review.
So this basically a notice to proceed today for them to continue on with their project?
That's, that's what we're asking you. The same that we did with Monizuma Water Company when they...
Mm-hmm. Start their building, yeah.
Chairman, can I have one more comment?
Go ahead.
I think with, I think with the representative here, and I don't know his title, for MLC, some of the things that he just mentioned, I think still have more questions for the neighborhood to be wondering, how much of an impact is going to be there? He mentioned the summer camp and into the future. I think there's still more questions that the neighborhood may need to know about and would be great if they could have that opportunity to know before this proceeds, so, thank you.
I'm happy to speak to that as well. At the Planning and Zoning hearing, we did, you know, that was, that same question was brought up, if we're going to have a large event where there is going to be a large number of cars or vehicles coming in and out for a particular event, that we would notify the county and the Planning and Zoning Commissioners asked for that and I readily agree, we're happy to do that. I guess I'd ask for some feedback about, you know, what that threshold is and maybe the neighbors can help us figure that out, you know, what's appropriate, when do they want to be notified when we're having an event, but we're happy to comply with that request.
In my notes, initially speaking with them, I have down, well, of course, it's going to be limited timeframes, of course, with the kids going out there, they're not, they're not out there a lot during the summer, or April through May, September through October, they're thinking possibly 35 events per year, but again, a lot of those are vans or school buses. I would be more than happy to add that to the permit verbiage if they would like, or whatever, whatever number is agreeable, and then whatever mitigation that we can come up with to notify the neighborhood of when an event is going to happen. I guess that's kind of, we don't normally do that, but...
Need to move on.
Well, I don't, I really don't want to have a number like that on there if we haven't did it before. And being a rancher, it would be hard for me to vote against something that teaches kids how to ranch. I think there were some valid concerns out there with the neighbors and I thought you did a good job of answering some of those concerns. So I have, I have no problem with it.
You need a motion?
Yes.
Do we? Well, I think you've demonstrated that you're a good neighbor. I appreciate Melinda coming up and saying, you know, that, you know, you've improved your property out there and I think that's, I think that's very, very positive that you're taking this 80 acres that you have there, 80 acres plus or minus, and are going to turn it into something other than a weed patch and a prairie dog mound because a lot of our, a lot of our properties that have absentee ownerships have become just that and it's becoming a, it's a real blight on this county. We've got a lot of people that own land here that don't live here and they don't take very good care of it. And so it's nice to, nice to have one of your neighbors say that you're making improvements on that land. And I think educating our young kids into that is absolutely one of the best things you can do. I think they need that outdoor, in the dirt, in the field experience rather than on the iPad and the electronic devices to, I think that's, I think that's horrendous. Will be a big benefit to our youngsters in our community. So I would make the motion that we grant the MLC LLC the authority to proceed with their project at County Road at 19760 County Road W, Lewis, Colorado.
And I would just add that, the one comment about getting, the ranch kids not getting cold, going hungry, getting wet is that, they're going to have to learn that part, too, because it's actually, but I would second that motion.
Hot, hungry and cold and hungry, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the high-impact permit. Permission to proceed?
Notice, yeah.
Or notice to proceed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we're behind.
Yeah, we need to be behind today. Thank you, thank, thank you all for coming, audience, we appreciate your input.
Close this one.